Can we please rise for our flag salute? Chief Cahill, please start us.
To the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel, let the record reflect Commissioner Kriebel is absent. Mayor Hold- excuse me, Mr. Landgraf.
Present.
Mayor Holtzman.
Here. Pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. So tonight, we have a presentation, and we just want everybody to know the reason we picked tonight's meeting is we only have one meeting in November. And of course, the holiday of Thanksgiving, all religious denominations celebrate, or most. It's a holiday to be thankful and to thank people. Shelley can't hear me. Okay. So we picked tonight's meeting to do it, to show our gratitude. Commissioner Kriebel's not here. He seconds what I have to say. Commissioner Landgraf is on Zoom, so he will speak for himself. So tonight is to recognize our volunteers. There are faces that I've known for a long time, and there are faces that I don't know because there are areas under the other commissioners. And when they feel that someone deserves an appointment, I go with it. So unfortunately, I might not know some of you personally or professionally, but I do know that every volunteer, and we have over 100 for the city of Ventnor, because we have a rec board, a beautification committee, a green team, we have ad hoc, zoning board, drug and allowance, drug and alcohol allowance, Ventnor Arts Alliance, and the farmers market. So I just wanted to say, volunteer, it's a selfless act. You give your personal time, your personal energy, and your mind space. It occupies part of your, you know, rents part of your mind space, and it's in your heart, and it's in your soul to give, and really to receive nothing in return. So I think all our volunteers are special. We, the commission, dearly and deeply appreciate all the work that you do, whatever committee you're on. And most of you make us look good. Your efforts, I feel that the Imagine Ventnor team in 16 had a vision, and from what I see and from what I hear, that vision thus far has come to fruition. And a lot of it has to do with the volunteers and so many people willing to work with us, the elected officials. So from my heart, thank you. I will pass it on to Commissioner Landgraf, who's on Zoom, and I know he wants to say a few words.
Thanks, Mayor, and sorry for my personal absence there tonight, just unavoidable. Lots of volunteers, you know, Beth, I think you were talking about like 133 volunteers, which is fantastic for a small community, and also critical for a small community. The events that we have, the committees that we offer our residents to be on, would not be possible without volunteers. The farmer's market, the special events that Donna, you know, puts off, doesn't come off without a lot of the volunteers that are on other committees, but help out there. Penny and Andy, for two of them, they're at every gosh darn event that I show up at, and they're there before me and they're there after me. And that happens with a lot of you guys. Really appreciate the effort that you guys put in, suggestions all the time to make things better. I think, Beth, going back to when we were, you know, knocking on doors in 2016, we met Andy and Penny, and they said, we want to bring a farmer's market to Ventnor, back to Ventnor. And that just was their idea that they ran with, and that entity has just taken off. It's one of the best farmers markets in our county. Top two, I think Brigantine might get more people, but I think we got better quality. I'm going with that. So it's just really great to see the people of our community that have, and some of the volunteers are only here in the summertime. They're summer residents. So they may not be here tonight, but they still receive our thanks because of what they do for our community. You guys make our community wholesome. You make it whole. And I certainly appreciate it and echo Beth's thank you for, and Commissioner Kriebel's thank you to you guys. So if Kathy's not there, I can see her remotely telling me to do this, to shut up. So I'll shut up and move on with the meeting. But thank you guys from the bottom of our hearts. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. At the end of the meeting, I will, for the public, let everybody know what's going on in the city. But of course, one, actually two of our volunteer groups, things are coming up in December. On the third and fourth will be the Holiday Craft Show, and on the third will be our Holiday Parade, of course, led by Shelley and Pete. So and we all know the planning and the ad hoc and the green team, they're just an ongoing, they're, you know, every month, meetings, two meetings, whatever it is. So but just since we're heading towards the holidays, I wanted to mention that. So what I would like everybody to do, and I will pick on someone that I've known probably most of my life, is Lorraine Salata. So what I would like to do is start with Lorraine, and you don't have to come up to the mic, just stand up, state your name, and what your volunteering position is, whatever, board your honor committee, and so we have it for the record. So I'm gonna start you, Lorraine.
For this work? Please give me something.
It is hard to hear on Zoom if they're not up at the microphone.
Around, and how's that?
Go back to Lorraine.
Have to say it again? Okay, okay. I'm Lorraine Salata, on the planning board, which I have been on for about 25 years.
I'm Tim Coob. I'm also on the planning and zoning board.
Shelley DeRazio, I'm with the Twilight Holiday Parade Committee and the Beautification Committee.
Ether as you'll see.
I'm Janet Bodoff, and I am a proud old coot at the farmer's market.
Hi, I'm Molly Galipco, and I am an old coot as well. I don't know if I'm proud of that, but I volunteered the farmer's market.
What are the requirements for a proud old coot?
I'm Joan, I'm farmer's market and the ARC.
Rose Manal, farmer's market.
Susan Liebowitz, farmer's market, also an occasional old coot, and also the wife of a volunteer of the farmer's market as well.
Kathy Landgraf, farmer's market.
Marc Sugarlessfee, from ARC for many years, and the fabulous, fabulous under farmer's market from Penny and Andy, that was amazing. And I love everybody here.
Penny Starr, farmer's market.
Barbara Clegarin, chef side out, and the garden floor.
Andy Starr, the farmer's market.
Roman Zabiha, planning board.
Tom Walsh, five years, farmer's market, early shift.
Nadia, Roman's wife.
Farmer's market.
Eileen Grimley, farmer's market.
Monica Coffey, green team.
Steve Jisaki, green team.
Lee Widman, green team.
Symmetrical.
Am I in the middle? I am in the middle. I can feel my toes. And me, don't forget me.
She's lost among the men. Keep going back.
Thank you.
I have seen.
Mark, ready for the track meet?
It's that.
Ready for the track meet?
Yes.
Mike, would you mind just closing the door when they're all out? I mean, when everyone exits? But there's people out there, and they're gonna be talking, and so it's getting closed right now. Mark, right? It's okay to close that right now a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I'm not listening to you anymore. You just get me in trouble. I could do that all by myself. Commissioner Landgraf, you were good with that?
With the thanking everyone? Yeah, that's fine. That was great.
Maybe we can Photoshop you and Tim in.
I think I'm good.
Okay. I asked Kathy to put a picture of you up on her phone, but she wouldn't do it, so you have to deal with her.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So tonight, the presentation, which was very important to we, the commission, because of what these people do, it really is selfless, and they really work hard. And they make our city even a better city. So we don't have department head, anybody out there on Zoom, just so you know, we're going to be doing a work, we do the workshop portion of the meeting, where we discuss things that need discussion, and then we close that and go into a regular meeting where we vote. If you have something to say during the public portions, I'll be specific on what public portion it is. The first one is based on what we're going to vote on, and then at the very end, it's open for anything anybody would like to say. You state your name, and we try to limit everyone to three minutes. If we can't resolve your issue or question in three minutes, then we request you call City Hall and request a meeting with the appropriate commissioner. So that's the way we run the meeting. Okay, so we do not have any discussion on capital, or capital improvement. We will have minutes to approve October 13 regular meeting and October 13 of the executive meeting. Oh, excuse me, I'm gonna backtrack a minute. I'm so sorry. Let me backtrack. I would like to do a moment of silence. In the last, less than 10 days or so, we lost, actually, two longtime residents of Ventnor, and one of our own, meaning our fire inspector, firefighter, Joe I, I can't say his last name, even though it's Italian, he lost his father. We lost a resident, Gail Belloff, who lived at 6200 Atlantic Avenue, and no matter where she traveled, she traveled all over the world, she always considered Ventnor her home, and she passed away young. And we also lost a resident, business owner, and volunteer at a young age, Anne Marie Wiesen. So can we just nod our heads?
Mayor, if I could add one more to that?
Please.
So sorry to say, good, longtime friend of mine, Bill Dietrich, passed away just this past week. Known Billy a long time, played volleyball with him both on the sand and on the courts. Character of our community, you could always see him walking the beach with his cigar and his hat. Just a great asset to our community, and he will be missed, as will Mrs. Belloff, Joe's pop, I certainly didn't meet him, and certainly Anne Marie is a huge loss to our community. So, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for adding the other gentleman. So a moment of silence, everyone in Zoom and in the chambers. Okay. It really makes you stop and think and smell the roses. Life's a gift. Nobody is promised tomorrow. You know, attending, well, two services, and it's tough. It's really tough. Okay. Anyway, we do have an ordinance to introduce tonight, and that is 2022-020, and that's amending and supplement in chapter 214, section 61. I know Chief Fussner's here. So if you want to give us a quick snapshot of that, that deals with parking meters, but it's, I know it's certain areas, and if you don't mind, our police chief will give a snapshot of exactly what that's all about.
Yeah, essentially, we're just bifurcating the seasonal and non-seasonal areas of the town. So the first section would be our non-seasonal, which are mainly our business districts, and they would be enforced pretty much all year round, except during that small holiday period. The other section, the B section, would be our seasonal, which will run, I believe, from like May to October. They're primarily the areas that are adjacent to our beaches and Borwalk area.
There's a limit of parking?
Correct.
Time limit. Okay. Nine hours? The beach areas?
Yes, beach area, nine hours, and the business district areas, four hours.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Landgraf, you okay with that?
Yep, yep. I got a chance to review and talk it through with Maria, more than likely.
Okay. We do not have any adoptions of any ordinances, nor do we have any public hearings. We will have resolutions that we will vote on by consent. So I'll start that list. So the first one is 2022-346, authorizing the disposal of surplus property, basically things that are unusable, file cabinets, old computers, fiberglass ladders. The next is 2022-347, and that is authorizing a tax abatement for 101C North Dorset Avenue. The next is 2022-348, and that's authorizing a tax abatement for 104 South Derby Avenue. The next is 2022-349, and that is authorizing a tax abatement for 9 South Newark Avenue. Next is 2022-350, and that's authorizing a tax abatement for 131B North Dudley Avenue. The next is 2022-351, authorizing a tax abatement for One Hart Lane. The next, actually the next group, when you hear provisionally appointing, it is a list of people in public works, and that is all what we did, all the work that was done, from the outside consultant who worked for the state New Jersey Civil Service for over 30 years. She had come in and basically did desalots, and we're putting people in the proper titles. So 2022-352 is provisionally appointing Lawrence Hoff to equipment operator slash water repair. 2022-353 is provisionally appointing Stephen Bazner as equipment operator. The provisional piece is, it's all part of the civil service process for the public. Next is 2022-354, and that's provisionally appointing William Nolan to maintenance worker two, grounds. Next is 2022-355, and that's provisionally appointing Thomas Mannering to maintenance worker two, grounds. Next is 2022-356, adding a job two title, maintenance worker one, grounds, to Daniel Cahill. Next is 2022-357, adding a job two title, mechanic helper to Douglas Biagi. Next is 2022-358, adding a job two title, pumping station operator to Robert P., newcomer, the fourth. The next is 2022-359, and that is setting hours and hourly rates and suspension of police enforcement of our parking meetings during the holiday season. So my little scribble notes say, from October 1 to the Friday before Memorial Day, the meters are enforced from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. From Memorial Day to, I think it's, is it September 30th? It's eight to eight. And the rate in the winter months is a dollar, and in the summer it is a dollar fifty. However, the municipal lot is always two dollars. Did I get all that right? Yes? Thank you.
I think so.
Thank you. Okay. Next is 2022-360, authorizing seasonal part-time help. This, these two next positions are for our pickleball, as pickleball coordinators, and it's effective November 1. It's for winter pickleball that is going to be held at the V E C C. So here's the brochure, and I know we've advertised it. So we have two part-time people that we're bringing on. So the first one is 2022-360, authorizing seasonal part-time, and it's specific to pickleball coordinator. And 2022-361, oh yeah, the first, that one included two people, sorry, authorizing the cancellation of a tax that was incorrectly assessed. The next is 2022-362, and that's awarding a contract to Lexa Concrete for Ocean Avenue curb and sidewalk replacement and parking improvements, not to exceed $167,405. Lance, if you'd like to talk about this?
Sure.
That gave me a snapshot, but this is your?
Yep. So this is Ocean Avenue, right behind City Hall. What we're doing is taking the curb line on the, on City Hall side, the ocean side, and moving it back four feet to provide a better, better driveline in that street. That's very narrow. There's numerous times where vehicles are being clipped as cars come around off of Harvard, as they come down Ocean to get to Cambridge Avenue. So we're gonna move that side, that sidewalk will be a little more narrow. It's plenty wide enough, even being reduced, to gain an extra four feet of parking lane, widen up the driveline through that area, and we're adding, I believe, a dual station for electric vehicle charging at that location as well. One of those will be designated for a city electric vehicle that we anticipate coming out of our ESIP grant, and then the other one would be for the public. So this was, we had to rebid this. We had an anomaly in the first go-around, and this will be $167,405 to Lexa Concrete, it's a local concrete company.
And Lance, the other side of the street, the curves will be redone, right?
Yes.
And the accessible ramps will be, go all the way around?
Yes, correct. Yeah, anytime you do a project, you have to do new ADA handicap ramps.
Right. Okay.
Maria, you wanted us to add something about back in the parking. During the holiday season, the meters will be off in our business areas.
I think I said that. Yeah, yeah, that we're suspending the meters, enforcement of meters from Thanksgiving to New Year's Day.
Yep.
I missed that. I wrote it down, and I missed it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Landgraf.
Yep, thanks.
I don't know why I wrote it down and didn't say it. There's too many other things I had written down with that, with the hours and the dollar amounts. I got confused.
Got all the dollar math, was good. That was, got all that on point. Just forgot about the free stuff.
I know, and I have it written right here on the side. Anyway, hey, nobody said I was perfect, right? Okay, so that goes through the resolutions we will be voting on. So then we will have approval bills and payroll and discussion items. I don't think we have any tonight. So now we will open it to the public. This is a public portion that people can state their name. This is only on things that we just mentioned, and what we will be voting on. So do I have a motion to open the public portion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is open to the public. Like I said, if you'd like to speak, if anybody here wants, no. Anyone from Zoom, use the raise your hand icon, and you'll be let in. Anyone out there, Jim?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call it to order our regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the first thing to vote on, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2022, regular meeting, and October 13, 2022, executive session?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from both the October regular and executive meeting.
Okay, I will second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Landgraf?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-020?
Make a motion to introduce ordinance 2022-020?
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please. I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Liangria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. We do not have any public hearings, nor do we have any ordinances to adopt. So do I have a motion to adopt resolutions by consent, numbers 2022 dash 346 through 2022 dash 362?
I'll make that motion.
I will second you. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Liangria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Our comptroller, Amy, can you please give us the bills and payroll for this period?
Payroll for this period is 592,589 cents. The payables for this period is 468,502.95 cents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated from our comptroller?
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Amy.
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Liangria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Okay, the safety is all written here. If anyone wants to say it, we usually don't get into the nitty gritty of that. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so the next is Commissioner comments and reports. Lance, if you don't mind, I have a few things I'm just going to go over real quick.
Go ahead.
Reminder to the public, December 2nd is our tree lighting right on Sacramento Avenue at 5:30. December 3rd and 4th is the Holiday Craft at the, around the library from 10 to 4. December 3rd, the Holiday, the Twilight Parade starts off at 5 o'clock. December 9th, Sand on the Fire Truck by our Fire Department. There is a live nativity at Holy Trinity at 6:00 PM. And our city menorah lighting was moved to Monday, December 19th, because the Rabbi, they're, they're doing it on the first night this year. Because we've always done it on the first night, because they've always done theirs later on during the season. So I just wanted to be respectful to the Jewish community. And I think I covered everything coming up in December. Um, that's all I really have to say. I just wanted to remind everybody about that. I think tonight was great with the volunteers. I think they deserve that and a lot more, and they are the behind the scenes on a lot of things. So they are greatly appreciated. Commissioner Langrath?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, one, one event that's coming up even sooner is the Eagles tailgate against the Colts. On Sunday, November 20th, it's out at Ski Beach. We'll have the game, we'll have vendors out there, we'll have food trucks, beer truck, you know, all that fun stuff out there on Ski Beach. So we'll be activating that site in the fall, which I don't think we've really done before. So bring, bring your gloves, bring your coats, and it's going to be a little chilly.
You get the little hand warmers that you put in your gloves, keeps you warm.
I use them when I ski.
Yeah, they're great, aren't they?
I, I wanted to thank our Public Works guys. We had some real issues out, and not just the Public Works guys. PD, Fire Department, everybody was out there on Lafayette Avenue a couple of weeks ago. We had a real issue with the sewer and water main out there. Guys came in on a weekend, you know, trying to get stuff done. Snake really stepped up and, and his knowledge of our system, Snake, sorry, John Connor. Got to get away from the nicknames. Really helped work with our, our emergency contractor, Arthur Henry, and really shut something down that could have been a lot worse in the second leak that we had. So wanted to thank those guys publicly. They did a great job, as well as, you know, PD being out there and Fire Department as needed, working with, you know, sometimes low water pressure out there. They're always concerned about that. So thanks, thanks to those guys. Also, tomorrow is Veterans Day. We will be remiss in thanking our veterans for their service to our community, our nation. You know, we're certainly, you know, thankful for, for what they've given. Some have given, you know, what, what's the catchphrase? Some have given some, some have given all. So thank you to the ones that are still here, and thank you to the ones that are not.
I'll second that.
And that, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay.
Said I've been out of town for a few days. I'll be back in town tomorrow. Dad's doing good. He's home.
So then I can text you at 3:00 in the morning?
Do not.
That was a joke.
I know.
I know.
Do not, do not.
I don't know how that happened that time. Anyway. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Langrath.
Yep.
So the next part is the public comment section, and this is for anybody that would like to speak on anything. Like I said, we like to limit it to three minutes. If we can't resolve something in three minutes, then we suggest a one-on-one meeting with the appropriate commissioner. Jim, do you have anyone out there?
There is one person in Zoom.
Okay. So let me know if they raise their hand and sir, in the audience, you're good? Okay. Anyone, Jim? Oh, wait, do I have a motion to open public portion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Public portion is open. No hand, Jim?
Nope, no takers here.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have an executive session, correct? Correct, sir? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all. Thanks for accommodating me.
Thank you, Lance.
Have a good trip back.
Yeah, be a bumpy ride.